Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen for January 7, 2014. Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year.
Our first meeting of the new year. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes, which we're actually going to defer until, I believe, is it the 21st?
Yes.
January 21st. The reason for this is we just received our agenda today because of the snowstorm and we didn't have a chance to go over it. So, we'll get to these minutes on the 21st. So, we'll move on to the future meeting dates. We're going to meet on this Saturday, the 11th of January. And this is for the goals and objectives for our town administrator. It's an open meeting. We're having it at Mr. Hurley's office building in Quincy, which is at 36 Miller Style Road in Quincy. 36 Miller Style Road. We're going to talk about our goals and objectives for our town administrator. 9 to 11. 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And the public is welcome. We will meet again on the 21st after our next meeting in this office will be on the 21st. Usual time, 6:30. Next on the agenda is Citizen Speak. Anyone here for Citizen Speak? Nobody here for Citizen Speak? Okay. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 5. And we'd like to welcome up our Police Chief, Richard Wells, for his quarterly report. Every couple of meetings, we try to bring in a department head to tell the public what's going on in their departments. And this week, it's our Police Chief, Richard Wells. Welcome, Richard.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
You too.
Happy New Year, Richard.
It was nice being first.
Isn't it?
I'm usually at the back of the pack.
You ran early tonight.
Oh, we can let you sit down for a while if you want.
No. This could take a while. I cut this at three pages. I could've kept going. I put together a quick draft for you just because this came between the storm and everything. This came quick, this request. But I wanted to have something in writing. So, I broke it into several issues. Some of them you are aware of. One is personnel. We do have four recruits who are currently in their fourth week of the Boston Police Academy. As you are aware, one resigned at the end of Week 1. We were sad to see that happen. It was a personal decision on his part. It was a cadet that we had two years invested in. But I give the kid credit for, this is a $100,000 a year job at some point, and to just make that decision to walk away and opt into another field, I give him credit for having the courage to do that.
Can I ask you a question right there? Only because I have two friends in the academy.
Still there or they leave?
They're still there, but they almost quit the first week as well. I mean, it's...
That first week must be tough.
I mean, they break you down and they build you back up again.
True.
It's very, very stressful.
And this is our first time with the Boston Police Academy. We've never done this. We've used the State Police Residential Academy twice in Sub-And Chief, and we've used the Transit Academy twice. We've been talking with Boston for three years. I mean, it has a benefit to us. It's so close.
Right.
It's Williams Avenue. And they've gone very much into the training of police agencies other than their own. I know that Kent Chief, he had people in the last class. He loved it. He encouraged me to try it. They are very strict. I give them that. They're very strict. There's a, if you see our Facebook page, there was a picture they put on their Facebook page of the recruits training on Friday in the middle of the snowstorm, outside in the snow. And it's not just the physical aspect, it's the mental aspect. And Laura Griffin just asked me a question. I think a lot of it, too, is, is they bring a great deal of personal experience into their cadre of instructors. There's a wealth of background there. I think sometimes you just get in there and the reality of, wow, this is really what this is about. Sometimes, I mean, as I said, in this case, this is something we had a pretty good investment in. And I don't think I could go from the people in this office to every person who works from the front door of the police station. One thing about him, boy, they loved him. I mean, he was like, he was very, he spoke fluent Caverian.
Well, it is a stressful job. Extremely stressful job. So, you want to, you know, you want to know you're ready to handle it when you...
That's true. And I, he was, I think they lost 10 the first week is the number, I think I heard, around 10. And go to your question that it was, I know Lieutenant Alba said to me, he actually went with them to the orientation, which was at headquarters the week prior. And he came back and he said to me, "All business." But he said in a different kind of way, like, "This is why you are here. This is the formative years of your career." I mean, your brothers are on the Boston Police, you understand. This is where you're going to... And the good thing that I do like it is that Boston's a diverse, complex city, much bigger than us. But as we all know, in this one, there are so many things that happen in that city that affect us on a daily basis. Not just, just everything from traffic to politics to education, everything. It just, I think that in that aspect, I'm very happy that I think at the end of this 26 weeks, we're going to have a very good product when it's over.
Right.
So, we haven't begun to move on filling this yet because the second aspect of it is the Second SRO at the high school. The final draft, which was approved by John Flynn, myself, Deputy King, and which went to Leroy Walker, I believe, is going to come back to you very shortly. And I think that we're probably going to be moving on this sooner versus later. And I think that we were able to include all the things that we felt for the town side and for the operation of the police department. I mean, as it is, they're going to get two highly trained, very skilled, experienced police officers for the price of one assigned to the schools. And so, in that aspect, I think, from a community's perspective, it's a pretty good bargain for them.
Now, you say the price of, well, because they don't pay for the...
Well, because we cover one here, because they only pay for one. We pay for one, so... And as you know, who knows where that could go in the long run? But I do agree, and I said this, I said this since from the time I became chief, the issues that we deal with in the schools today, all schools, not just, like Milton High School's no different than anywhere else, require a great deal of time on our part. And I'm going to get into that when I get into, there's one more aspect of, Item 4. Item 3 is we do have a vacant dispatcher's position. We've already, by the manager's contract, which our dispatchers are in, we've already advertised internally. There are no internal candidates. So, once Deputy King returns from leave next week, we'll advertise that externally. We'll go outside with that. And I expect that we'll get some very good candidates. This will be the first time ever that we've advertised for our dispatcher. So, I'll be interested to see what we get for candidates. This should be interesting. Number 4, this is something which, since the spring of last year, which is school critical response, planning and training, we've really devoted a lot of time and manpower to many improvements at the schools. And I know, Mr. Hurley, when you were Chair, we had a joint meeting at one point between us and the school committee. And we talked a lot about just things from hardening their locations up. We've addressed so many issues, and I don't think there's a parent, if you have a child that goes to any of the schools, you'd be aware of it, everything from security of the facilities to pass keys to hours, all different types, lockdown procedures. We did an all-day interactive training with every member of the high school staff. And the second phase of that will be every member of the middle school and the elementary schools in town. And inclusive of that, every member of our department is going to take an eight-hour interactive class during the February vacation inside the high school. So, this is something that I don't see going away. The Attorney General of the United States has spoken so many times now about just the potential for violence in a school and the necessity for any school district in the law enforcement, patrols that district, and in this case, it's us, to have a very comprehensive planning skill. The one thing I have to thank Leroy, because he really did kind of take this, and I am very happy. He presented actually before the District Attorney's Task Force last month, and is very clear that our initiatives have really kind of put us in a very good light countywide. So, I have to thank Sergeant Richmond as well, who's, he doesn't complain. He gets, he does all right in it, but he's done a great job moving this forward from our end of it, from our end.
Some communities do, I think Boston's done it, but kind of mock drills, if you will, or, and I don't think you have to do a ton of them, but just to, just to see how prepared the people really are. I mean, nobody knows what they're going to react like until they're under pressure trying to react.
Exactly. So, in this day, the day that we do, and I don't want to give away all the tactics that we do. We do by law, do lockdowns every year in every school, public and private, including Curry, Milton Academy, the Catholic Schools, all of them. We don't usually announce what we're going to do or how we can do them. In this one that we just did at the high school, fell into that criteria. They had no idea when they were coming to school. It was Professional Education Day. They knew it was going to be a, in the subject of school security. It was a professional consultant we brought in called Synergy 911, who has been the leader in this region for doing this. They just did, I just attended one that they did for the NFL that was really very good. They've done all the District Attorney's ones. They bring a great bit of local knowledge as well as regional knowledge to it. But the teachers on this day, I would say, when they walked out of there, they were, it was so realistic that one of the videos, which was a training video, just to show them something, they thought was real. And they started to react to it as if it was really happening in the school. And so, in that aspect, it got their attention. And we didn't advertise this a lot. There was a lot of discussion, should we go to the press? Should we invite the press? And these situations have got enough press as it is. I think from a public safety point of view, and from an educational point of view, it was more important that we get the message across to them, and that at the end of the day, everyone walks away more prepared for it. And I think that worked in this aspect. And that's where, and I have to give Leroy credit as well, because he really wanted that. He's really taken on a lot of this work and gone to communities from as far away as the Cape to our west to see what other communities were doing. And he, you know him, he's a taskmaster when he wants something done. I'm afraid I'll let you know. So, but he's been a great partner in this, and I can't thank him enough for everything he's done. And as I say, that's something that will really be ongoing. Outside of personnel and training issues, the only other thing, the next big thing that I brought up is an issue that's been growing since 2008, which is license to carries, renewals and applications. Prior to 2000, we handled about 80 a year. In 2012, we did 330. That's about a 300% jump. There are a lot of reasons why. A lot of it is the national discussion on the Second Amendment rights. We're not alone seeing this. This is something that's going on everywhere. From a statewide perspective, which is the state, who's actually, we approved the license, the state issues the license. They're backed up over 90 days. You may have seen a recent Channel 5 report, which talked about how many communities are complaining about the timeline. But I don't see this going away. And the reason I put this in is because Lieutenant Alba, who's in that office, does many roles, but this has become a lot, very time-consuming, because there's so many people, from housewives to parents to college kids. You'd be amazed, the people that are walking in here every day, "I want to get a license to carry."
A license to carry is a concealed weapon?
Concealed weapon, yeah. But the process, though, goes all the way to a college kid wanting to carry mace. It's an LTC. So, you're putting the time out of it as that, but the concealed weapon aspect of it. And I'll be honest with you, as Chief, it really is a lot of responsibility, because you ultimately make that decision, what to give and how to give it, and should you restrict it, and who gets it. And we're at the point in life where the backgrounds that we do are so intensive that we're looking at everything from mental health issues to your personal life to criminal issues. And in any one of them, you can deny an individual. And I had a hearing yesterday of a resident in who, you know, he's had a good job...
They have the rights totally when they...
On the mental aspect, yeah, they have to do that. On the mental illness part, they have, they're, you answer those questions on a pain, the penalties of perjury, and the application itself is enough to disqualify you, not being truthful on the application. And unfortunately, a lot of them that are disqualified, that's why. They answer no to a yes. They all answer no to a question that's a yes. We put it in the system.
Who interviews them?
Lieutenant Alba. It's very comprehensive. You actually have to make an appointment to do it. Make an appointment, he does them, goes through it. Photo, fingerprints, the whole...
Would you deny more people than you approve?
I don't know. That's a good question. I only see the approvals. The denials, I don't even see. Because if they denied on a, on a, like if there's a statutory, you know, there's certain statute, if the statutory disqualifier, it never even made, we just make you wait, look at you, you've got, boom. I don't even see that one. I see the suitabilities, and I see the ones that are revoked. And I see the, you know, if they appeal it. I've only been to court three times in seven years.
To revoke one?
For an appeal, with someone who I denied appealed.
Oh, I see.
We've never lost one. I have my fourth one, actually, this Monday. I had one yesterday, I have one next Monday. And they are tough decisions, but it is a lot of responsibility who you're putting a gun on the hand of. It really is. It's just...
Does the state require any kind of weapons handling training?
Oh, yeah. So, that's, so you have to do that on your own. You have to take the state certification course, you have to come in with a document, you have to, all that. When I came on the job 30 years ago, the sergeant who ran, like, they'd bring you downstairs, the pin you'd fire off, six or eight rounds on a 22, and then that was it. And you got it a week later. It's just totally different. And we are one of the more restrictive states in the United States. And Massachusetts has what many of you is a, too restrictive. And so, that, in that aspect, that is another, I see that's, I mean, you do pay for it. We get, you know, we get a benefit of the cost. We split it 50/50, but I don't see it going away. I see that number continuing to increase.
Hunting.
The next one is hunting, and this is one that I probably could have written five pages on. And this came up again last year when Mr. Hurley was Chair. This is one that has really kind of crept up on us. One of the things that, and it's been a very educational thing for me, because I don't, I'm not a deer hunter. I know a little bit about the duck hunting. We now have hunting in multiple areas of the town. Green Street, Upper Buell Avenue, Holland Hillside. Milton Hill is the new one for us. Forbes Hill, properties off of Adam Street. There are private residents that have given permission to hunt.
That's bow hunting only?
Bow hunting. Now, and what I wrote in this, and I talked to Michael Blinson about this last week. I really want to follow this up a little more, but I wanted to touch on this tonight because it's really kind of started to peak. And what we've learned is two aspects. A, we have a huge deer population, as you all know. Within that population, we have some of the largest deer in Massachusetts in our town.
I've seen some pretty big ones in my driveway.
You're right. So, and with that has brought professional game hunters, who've gone to people's houses, knocked in, can I hunt? They don't tell you that, but that's their specific reason. We have an ongoing investigation now, which began with a lawful permission to hunt up on Adam Street, Milton Hill, which, again, I didn't even know there were any deer up there to hunt until two weeks ago. Two gentlemen were given permission to hunt by two residents, bow hunt. And what happened is a professional hunter, who was scouting the area, came in on his own, set up what are called baiting stations, which are illegal to bait the deer, and setting cameras. And it appears from our invest that his target is this huge buck, which some have described to me as the biggest one they've seen in like a long time, which is living in that area. And we do know that one of the hunters who targeted this area has had the record in Massachusetts for several years as the largest buck, and he's looking for that. So, in this case, we wound up, the environmental police and us wound up colliding, because they had information coming from one way, we had information coming from another way. We didn't even know they were in town. And it was really apparent to me at the end of this week ago that we're going to have to deal with this. This is something that, I can tell you that it does rest with you, as far as hunting on town property. I've researched that bylaw, and I thought it might require a bylaw change. It does not. It would, it would vest with the Board of Selectmen, but at this time, and I wrote it in this report tonight, but as I say, I'm going to follow up on this in more detail. I wouldn't recommend it at this time, because just what I see from the private consent owners, this really no regulation, all the environmental police are doing it at the time to put a lot of time in here, and so, they're coming from everywhere. So, maybe Mr. Hurley's giving permission to hunt on his X amount of acres, but besides him, there's one, two, three, and four coming in at different times. And this is going to become a policing issue for us. We're going to have to deal with this. Because other than the car, there is no real predator for deer in our resident, and we've got them everywhere. I mean, we've got them at the police station.
Right.
And I don't see this going away. The second aspect that I touched about is the duck hunting, and you saw the, what happened at West Ford today. And the Napaunsa River Basin, between the Granite Avenue Bridge, Gulliver's, to include Gulliver's Creek, all the way up beyond Lynch's House into that river, has become a highly sought-after area to hunt ducks. We've taken complaints. The issue for us is two things, is that they use, and if you watch tonight, they use these custom-made little boats, because the bridge closes on October 1st. They come from the Boston Harbor side, they get in under the bridge, so like no one else can get in after them, the bigger police boats. They'll go in like drift on a high tide, they're all the way up Gulliver's, which can take you almost to Squonham Street. And then they start firing. And this isn't going to go away. We know of two professional companies that are bringing in hunters, and they're hunting quite a bit there, especially on Saturdays and Sundays. So, I never thought in my wildest dreams, hunting would be an issue in Milton, but it's something we are going to have to address going forward. But I can tell you, this does lie with you. You could vote to give permission and outline certain town properties. I don't think there's a lot, and I don't think, there are some hunters who want to debate with us about the, they're trying to use GPS tracking about the use of a firearm. I'm not going to be an advocate for firing, discharging a weapon. Anyway, as a matter of fact, the law's very, it doesn't even say about discharging. It's just carrying a loaded weapon is a violation within so many feet of a dwelling, or so many feet, 150 feet of roadway. So, and the other thing is, in many cases, maybe not so much the bow hunters, but people who hunt with rifles, whether it's duck hunting in the river on the boat or moving, they move. They don't stay in one place. And the, within so many feet of a dwelling, it's 360 degrees. It's not just your house over here. It's all... So, I put quite a bit in there tonight, but there's a lot more that I think we'll have to come and look at this as a separate issue, because I don't think it's going to go away for you. I think it's off for us as either. Nancy as well. I talked to Nancy Passani, our Animal Control Officer. She's very familiar with all of this. It's going to continue. It's going to...
Maybe we could have Michael check with some of the, some of the other towns that do permit it, like Dover, or, you know...
Yeah, who are farm or, yeah. And have...
What they do.
Yeah, one of the places I'm going to tell you right now, and I, just in the background that I went and looked in, is I, when up on Quiddy Road, I mentioned this to Bill Clark. I had no idea. So, if you drove up Quiddy Road, go by the Boy Scout camp, park at the first gate on the right, there's a gate immediately on the left. Walk in that path. You're only going to go in about, you think you're in the Blue Hills Reservation. You're not. You're only going to go in about not even 100 yards, and you're going to suddenly start to see signs everywhere, hunting by private property, hunting by permission of owner only. And it extends almost all the way to Hillside Street?
Way to Hillside.
All the way to Hillside Street. And almost all the way down to the dam at Highland Street in some spots. And I will name it, there's two names that are posted. They're both town residents and...
It's all private property.
It's all private property. You'd think, but if you and I ever had, you'd say, "Oh, we're in the Blue Hills Reservation." You're not. You're in the town of Milton. So, as I say, and the fact that the signs are even up there, these, obviously, these residents in these neighborhoods are dealing with it. They have to be.
Yeah.
And the other thing, as I say, there was so much, I could go on. Like the environmental police, we know that there's been some hiring of hunters. There was a lot of things in the law about that alone that we don't, because it's not something we're really dealt, you know? We go by the bylaw, you know, hunting, no hunting, but it's clear to me now, particularly after this past season, that this isn't going to go away. This is, they're going to try and continue to press this. But I think there are many environmental lawyers out there, particularly in the duck side. It would not, I would not be shocked if a group wound up here at this table trying to press you to make a decision to... So, you're going to have to like give it some thought as to where you do it, how. And there's so many private locations where you can do it. I think that right now, that's probably the best way to kind of keep yourselves out of it, if you could, because it's, if you do approve it, we're going to have to come up with a plan to police it.
Right.
Because it's, okay. I'm almost done. The next one is just a quick one. These are critical ones in peer support. We've teamed with an initiative started by the Boston Police Department, where three members of the department are going to be part of a regional critical support team, Deputy Chief King, Sergeant Murphy, and Sergeant Douglas. As we learned in 2009, the Revellis case, when that incident happened, we had four officers who were intricately involved in that night. And I think a great deal of the success of what happened after that, from their personal perspective, because there was clearly a case that even though in policing, you know, we deal with negative things all the time, that this was one that could be a game changer for any one of the four of them who were there. And they got some great help and some great support from immediately beginning that night. And I will always be grateful to the expertise they brought, as well as the expertise that some of the troopers that did the investigation for us, the shooting investigation. And so, I'm very pleased that this is something that we've taken an aspect for, because there are, in recent cases, you've seen incidents just recently in Boston where two young officers took their own lives. It's something that you really need to monitor and pay attention to. Society is complex, their lives are complex. And so, I'm very glad that we have done this. I'm almost done. Crime, I gave you my last, I talked about this my last quarter, as you know. The biggest, the two big crimes for us in 2013 were house breaks. Overall, we went from 69 to 96, but the good news is the numbers spiked in August of 17, and they came down to, I think we only had one in November, and four in December. We've used many strategies and many, many different policing methods to do, to deal with this. We've made arrests. But our biggest thing, and I reiterate it again, is our relationship with the public. They're so critical. Our social media, our meetings like this, talking about it yourselves, is really important. Regional property being these are not going to go away, but if we approach it collectively and continue to address it, I think we'll have success going forward. The last thing is investigations. The detective unit has got several ongoing major investigations right now. Two of them are white collar. We did, we did secure a first-degree murder indictment on Jamaica Plainman for the murder of the April 2013, murder of a young man from Hudson Street. There were two motor vehicle fatalities in the past quarter, one on Highland Street and one, a second one which occurred on Thanksgiving morning. The Thanksgiving morning, when that woman was alone, she was the lone argument. No one else was involved. She was, she was unfortunately killed in that accident. In the Highland Street one, I can tell you tonight that there is going to be a criminal charge, has been filed in Quincy District Court. Five different charges were filed this week.
Benning?
Yes. This was a very prolonged, comprehensive, detailed investigation involving not just us, but the State Police Reconstruction Unit and the District Attorney's Office. I don't know exactly how it's going to proceed. It's going to begin in Quincy District Court. I don't know where it will until we wind up. It does name a driver of a car who was a resident of the town as the defendant in this case. And that's really, I'm prepared to say about it this time until a formal indictment, but I can tell you that those charges were filed this week. And in closing, I want to thank each of you. You know, we've been, a lot of used, sometimes we've used bubble gum and toothpicks to hold things together in the past year or so, but we've had some great successes. the past year or so, but we've had some great successes. And as always, I'm very grateful to the men and women who do a great job. They really do, and they're extraordinary conditions. They, they, they do a commendable job for this community every day. And I, I say till the day I die that they're part of the reason why, a big part of the reason why Milton is so great, and I thank you for their support of them. And if you have any other questions, I'll gladly answer them. I could be here all night, so I don't want to do that to you.
I have a, I have a question related to your role as the traffic, as head of the Traffic Commission. Two things. One is the Lodge Street neighborhood, we had asked, and I know you're working with the state to check the timing of the lights at St. Elizabeth's, and I apologize, I'm getting a little laryngitis, and I've got a bad, I've had a bad cold, but you, I know you're checking with the state to see whether there was any change in the timing of those lights that might be sending some of the cut through traffic down Lodge Street. And then secondly, where, where are things at with the Governor's Road, work that you're doing there?
Okay. So, I purposely left Traffic Commission off, because that could have been a whole subject on its own.
I know, yeah.
So, and I debated that today, and I, I just don't want to take, because I said, this is going to be a short meeting, you'll be out here quick.
Rather than ask you to come back at another meeting?
So two, I don't mind coming, so two things. Governor's Road, as you know, the DPW has almost completed all of the...
Roadworks.
Yes, the roadway. It's significantly narrowed. Is, at the last Traffic Commission meeting, there was a group of residents who came, and they want us to come to you with a recommendation to, I think we already did this, to block it off.
Yeah.
There were just as many against, as I'm sure you know.
Right.
I don't, I, I don't know if you saw an email that I wrote to Anne Marie, I gave Anne Marie a brief email last week, just on some aspects of the Traffic Commission. One of the things that we're finding, almost 99% of the time, on side streets, whether it's Governor's Lodge, is that speed is not the issue, volume is the issue.
Volume, yeah.
One of the key components that is really causing it on Governors, I don't know about so large, but definitely on Governors, is GPS.
Is it what?
GPS, the use of GPS.
Can find it, no?
Any hiccup on either 93 or 95, just, you know, they try to find their way. I don't, I'm hopeful that the narrowing has some type of effect. I am apprehensive that if we do block it, that it's going to be a big pushback for you. Not, and then ultimately to us. And so I, I, and, and to be honest with you, we didn't get to the next day after that meeting, and the emails just started. I'm sure you got them, like, don't do this, it's volume. And, and the people who see its volume are right, and, and I, I'll be honest with you, and the biggest thing, I knew nothing about being with the Traffic Commission, it's been the biggest eye-opening experience to me as chief. Because you wish you could just wave a magic wand and make it go away and just, but as I said, this, all the positive things in our community, traffic is not one of them. As far as Lodge Street, I do think we're going to get somewhat of a little bit of a relief from Mass Highway, when they give us the, whatever that time is and that like, because I just watch, I've sat up, I sat up there again two nights ago, and it just, it doesn't look right to me.
Long way, yeah.
It just doesn't look right to me.
Do they give any sense of timing and when they get back to us?
I don't even know. They could have already to John.
Okay.
I've not, I don't really go into Traffic Commission issues too much with the Traffic Commission unless we meet, but, so we'll be meeting at the end of this month, I just haven't picked a day yet. And I do know that you had mentioned about, and I try to mix night and meet, night and day meetings.
Oh, yeah, we should have a question.
If I think there's going to be a lot of residents, I'll make it a night meeting. If I think it's, they know it, I'll make it a day, only because it's, it's cost prohibitive. It's, it's easier just to get everyone in a room and get three hours and just like, let's work our way through that.
I wasn't aware of it, because I did see that email that you sent, that there was even a form, that...
Yeah, what I do is I take anything, once I get, if it makes its way to my desk, any request for Traffic Commission, I say, "Look, put it in writing. Put it in writing, goes to the agenda." The only thing that will keep it from getting on the agenda, if I know it's something that legally we can't vote, we'll tell you. Like, look at, we can't legally do that, so we try to expedite the time.
What I had mentioned to Anne Marie was to, because we have a section on the town website, the Traffic Commission, but it doesn't tell you anything.
Anything about it. So we could, I could create something to put there. I'll gladly do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll gladly do that. I, so, since we're there, let's go to the others. So, want to go to Granite Ave?
Dress the right on red.
Yeah, so let's talk about the right on red.
Oh, Adams and Granite, yeah.
Yes. So, we did a good thing in creating two turning lights. Because you've now...
Yep.
You've taken away from that. The, the bad thing is when it's, when they're aggressive, yes, when they're aggressive though, they'll violate, they'll start trying to get over as far back as Abbey Park, cross the WL to get in that second stagger line. The only thing that I worry about is that the lights are timed now, that the DPW has dragged every possible second they can to put it into Adams Street. To make Adams the priority, keeping Adams falling versus Granite Ave Northbound.
Right, which I think is a mistake, actually.
I agree with that. You might be right.
Because I, I've sat through the, you know, four light cycles, and it's far worse.
And I think too, I believe that part of the, the Governor's Road, that whole issue, Governor's Plymouth, there's...
It's because of Granite Ave.
You're coming from Quincy, you get to the common market, you're going to decide right there.
That's right.
You look north, if you see brake lights, well, with the bridge, take a right.
That's exactly right.
I'm not, I'm not, because there's no relief to the right. You can't take a right at Pierce, you can't take a right at mechanic, so either lie and die on Granite Ave, or cut through Granite. So, I, my hope is, here are my two big things, and this is what I wrote. I believe that from a Traffic Commission point of view, we have to have some very in-depth discussions with who's ever doing this work on the bridge. This has to be more than parking. We have to deal with flows in getting this correct. And the other issue is parking. We've got to bring parking for you into the 21st century.
Yes. I absolutely agree with that. I was talking to Anne Marie about that today. I think, I think it's time to at least start talking about parking stations. I mean, it's the only way we're, we're going to be able to enforce parking in the square.
I've heard communities that, when they embraced it or adopted it, you know, people scream, "It's going to be the end of business here." Some of the nicest business districts I have seen in communities like ours, what they just did in Dedham.
Dedham's beautiful.
Almost historic waterfront. Some of the sections of the south end of Boston where they put them in. It would not behoove us to create a method to, to regulate and to, because as it is now, I went back and looked. We, and, and I know that the chamber's trying to, and it's their livelihood, it's their business, so, one meeting, we took one side of Granite Ave, we went from an hour to 30. The next year, we went, we changed the other side. We're just buying signs and changing. Let's just regulate it. It's just, and even if we only tried a little bit first, you know, just a couple pilot sections, let's see how it is. I think in the long run, we could really, Central Ave and Milton Village, once, and I'm not, I'm a police chief, not a, but I went to work in that Getty Station when I was 15. I worked in that Central Ave Business District for almost 10 years of my life. When I look at it now, how the potential that that has, from the whole thing, the Steel and Ride 36th, the villages, the shops, the Hendry's, the, the Business District on the Village side, you really have a chance to have a real jewel here, and I think you make , and come part of that. You're so gracious to people, service on parking, people, it just, I think that we can do all of that, and, and so those are the two biggies that I see for 13, that we have to, I mean, I'm not going to lie to you at this point, in my seventh year, I don't want to be giving people Band-Aids that don't work anymore, and I don't want you to be wasting your time doing that. And I think that, one of the things that we find in the Traffic Commission meetings, and when we're fair to people, we tell them, it's like, they understand it. We have a raised road, get up at five, you know, just, what do you say to the people over 138, the parkway, can't add, the cut through Granite Ave? We couldn't do anything to change their lives. There's nothing we could do. We couldn't. And so we're trying, we've tried, you know, diverting from the side streets to pushing on the main streets. But we're at a point though, where we need to look, and when we have chances to make big changes in infrastructure, like in the square, to really enhance it, put in new lighting systems, we have to grasp it. I don't think we can let it get away from us. And I think the same, I think the MassDOT is going to have to, I know they tried this whole project, taking out the Hill of Chickatah, but then, whatever changes are made on MassDOT, we have to really kind of look at the big picture of 28, the volume, the flow it's carrying, and how we make it better. Because that's really the only way we're going to solve a Lodge Street issue. It really is, it's, you know, I've, I know Deborah wants to, we could try a no left turn, but in the long run, we don't find big changes. We find the biggest changes when we look at big picture.
Yeah.
So, I didn't want to get in trouble, and I, but I will glad, I will say, I will gladly come back and we can have a, you know, Traffic Commission discussion, if you want to do that.
While we're briefly on the, the parking, the pay station thing, it would be really nice, and, and we can certainly talk about it. If we could set up the pay stations whereby any profits we make would be just put back into the square, notification projects or...
I agree, I, I, and I'm not even looking at it as the fee aspect of it, that's your, and I, I would go on with it. But I just think, when you see what exists in other communities and the way they're dealing with parking, even like, because as it is now, an officer on our job has to like, okay, right up out on the street, tuck his nine foot right down the way.
Right.
Then come...
And come back again.
I mean, now it's so easy and so, even little individuals have a little laser light, green and red, it's just, it's so efficient. And I think if people know that, okay, I have so long, and I could, I think it really, in the long run, will help all of us. This is 2013, and I, I think that we are going to invite that company to 2014, I forgot. All right, see, I'm tired, I apologize. So we're going to invite that company that did Dedham to our next Traffic Commission meeting.
Oh, great, okay.
I, I think the Traffic Commission, you only meet quarterly, right?
Right.
To tackle issues like this, you're probably really going to need to meet more frequently than, and I know, no one wants to have more meetings to go to, but...
You want to weekly?
And another member of our Traffic Commission is Bill, who's, who's...
He doesn't have anything to do...
Midnight, so everyone has enough meetings to go to, but, I mean, these are big issues, and I think, it would be good if the Traffic Commission could take an initial crack at studying some of this, and maybe coming back to Anne Marie with some suggestions, or come up with some kind of a plan, to see if there's something we can do to address some of these issues. But it probably starts with the Traffic Commission.
So, here's what I have to say I'll do. I will schedule a series of them to try and tackle just some of the, like, Bing Bang Boom and Try and, because East Milton Project is beginning, it's, it's, we're at the point, I want to be ahead of this versus behind this. And as you know, we met with, there's a proposal for Meg Lane, whether it goes or not, when I met with them, and I've been with them twice now, you've heard me say, "I want to talk about traffic. I'm not worried about them. I want to talk about the effects of traffic." If any of these other developments happen, the effects of traffic, that has to be, anything you're going to add of that type of significance in this community...
Has to be.
The traffic aspect has to be there. Has to be there.
That's right. And so I would follow up with what Katie said, and maybe you should do a lot more meetings than quarterly. It'd be wise.
Well, no one wants to take a lot more meetings than you have to go to, but...
And listen, I have no problem with that to try and get, because we do have some, some big issues here, so I have no problem with it.
I think if we could tackle, try to come up with some kind of a game plan to tackle something more on a global scale, rather than, you know, a particular street that has an issue that, that needs to be addressed. I mean, obviously you have to take care of that as well, but...
And, and his, again, I guess my own fault, you just follow what was done before, even before, is, you know, it's wait till they get a whole bunch of issues, then schedule a meeting and then deal with it.
Right.
In this, you're correct, and I will do that. I will, I will set you a schedule on Senator Anne Marie, where we, what we're going to address, so, and you can come. And if, and again, anytime, if I think it's going to be a big, although I'm, I, the last thing I'll say, I am very upfront, if you've ever been to a Traffic Commission meeting, I do ask people, don't come in here with the emotion, because we don't make our decisions based on emotion, and you've got the police chief, the fire, you, we understand the ramifications of what's going to happen when, when human life is threatened. We don't need that. And the other thing is, often people come over at our kids' plant, we can't sanction you, say, "Oh, yeah, go have a street hockey game on the street." We can't do that, we just, we can't do that. We understand that it does happen, but we can't say, "Okay, go do that." So, we try to be very fair and upfront, but I agree with you, and I will champion your, your concerns, is that we are at a point where we need to tackle this and start to.
And actually, something that Tom said reminded me of one other thing that Anne Marie and I talked about the other day, which is, you mentioned about the, the money, what would the revenue be used for? We had, at the Fall Town meeting, we had an article about a revolving fund for traffic, that the warrant committee had some concerns with, I think because it was...
And they beat me up bad.
Well, and I, I think part of it was, there was a mismatch between the amount that they think would be collected, and the amount that we were asking be available for appropriate, for expenditure in a given year, in a given year, if we had a revolving fund. So the question is, you know, we have a, we've been asked to extend the deadline anyway by the planning board, because they had a meeting canceled last week due to weather, that they'll be meeting this week for their warrant article. So we could possibly add an article if we extend the deadline later in the meeting. Is there a reason to bring that back at the May Town meeting, or what would your thoughts on that be?
I would wait, because I think that what you're thinking is probably the right way to go, and I just, if you're going to do a revenue question, I'd put it all in one. Because I think really, a year from now, we could have this operational.
Hmm.
I really do. I think we could do this this year. It's not that big a deal, it's, Dedham did it pretty quickly, and it's pretty efficient and pretty, I say, even if we started as a small pilot program, as far, I'm not in the revenue collecting business, you are, and I, I'm going to go along with whatever you want to do with it. I don't, that was where Joe and I differed a little bit. I, I really was like, I think those are decisions for you to make, I'm not going to, I mean, I'll do whatever you want, but I'd rather just let you decide that...
Yeah, that is a good point, though. Maybe it's even, even bigger picture, that, you know, we do get...
Yeah.
A lot of revenue from, from parking tickets and whatnot, and, you know, maybe, maybe there should be some direction to that revenue, as opposed to just general fund revenue.
Yeah, and I, and you're right, Chief, I think Joe Lynch was the one who really...
He did, and I can understand that.
...generated that, because his budget is the one that's impacted by the signs, right?
And I, to be honest, I didn't expect, when I went to the warrant committee, to get whammed with it. And I could understand that, I just never, didn't expect that. I would expect more that, if you want to hear from you, than I did from them. And so when I just finally waved the white flag, I just said, "Okay, I give up." And just, so, but I, I do, I mean, I don't, I will say to you, I have no clue what they're going to say to us about revenue. And in Dedham, I think it's just there, that small Dedham Square, I think potentially here, you're talking about all three business districts.
Yeah, they all have parking.
I think, they all, they all have it, they, it just, it would really make, absent the revenue part of it, it would really make turnover, congestion, enforcement, so much easier today.
Right, fully agree.
It's just, and there has to be a reason why these communities are adopting it. I even, I don't know what Dedham, but I know in Plymouth, I heard nothing but like, really good things.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the reason people shut away from it before was the individual parking units are expensive to, you know, somebody's got to collect the money from them, and...
Right.
Pay stations are a lot easier to maintain.
You use a credit card, you do whatever, you just, you just drop it on your dashboard, and it tells you right where to put it, and, but I, I just, taking the revenue one, I really agree, I think that's...
Well, let's have the Traffic Commission maybe do the study on it, and do some research and come back to us with her, or come back to the town administrator with the recommendation.
I think it'll be quick, I think it'll be pretty quick.
Okay, good.
Okay?
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks, sorry, I'm so long-winded.
It's all right.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night. Okay, number six is the discussion on the Chapman Water Bill, which I believe we're going to defer until the 21st, at Mr. Chapman's request.
Yes, he had a conflict this evening.
And number seven is the approval of the engineering interns for our DPW.
I'll move to approve the appointment of Alec Santanowitz, 60 Dudley Street, Medford, Anthony Nocella, 369 Salem Street, Woburn, as seasonal employees, interns in the engineering department from engineering programs at Wentworth Institute of Technology, contingent upon approved by the personnel board.
Second.
Motion was made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number eight is the discussion on the annual town meeting warrant closing date, which we have agreed to extend until January 10th, at the request of the planning board.
The, Mr. Chairman, the planning board was scheduled to meet last Thursday evening to approve their articles for submission in the 2014 annual town meeting warrant. Unfortunately, due to the snowstorm, they were unable to meet, so they had asked if your deadline date for submission of articles was yesterday, Monday, January 6th. They asked if you would extend that date to Friday, January 10th. They do have a planning board meeting on Thursday, January 9th, which, at that meeting, they will approve the articles and then submit them on Friday.
Okay, good. The board is in favor, we have a motion?
I'll move to approve change of the 2014 annual town meeting warrant closing day from Monday, January 6, 2014, to Friday, January 10, 2014, at 1:30 PM.
Second.
Motion was made in second, that's all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And number eight, number nine is actually a defer, deferral again, it's the 502 Granite Avenue signage request by Jake Kennedy. And again, because we received our agenda today, we didn't have a chance to go over this decision, and therefore, we're going to, we're going to request that we, that we defer it till the 21st.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the snowstorm messed up more than just the planning board meeting, and we weren't able to get your agenda out to you in a timely fashion.
Well, it's, usually, we get our agenda by Friday, so that we can read it over the weekend and be prepared for our Tuesday meeting, but we received it yesterday and today, so we're not prepared for, to discuss this.
That's correct.
Okay. So, number 10 is the approval of the Milton Village Mass Works project. Is Bill Clark going to come up here for this? Bill was there.
He just stepped out with the chief.
And this is great news?
It is.
$1 million?
Good evening, Bill.
It was almost lost, actually.
Almost lost, yeah. Bill Clark, Director of Planning. Is that your correct title?
Director of Planning and Community Development.
Community Development. Welcome, Bill. Do you want to fill us in about this $1 million grant in the public?
The Mass Works project.
Mass Works project. Done on Granite Ave, done on Central.
$1 million, right?
$1 million.
Yeah, all right, I thought you said four, I'm like, uh, no.
No, $1 million.
One. Yes, I wrote it two years ago, and we got, put in for five pieces, we are going to do, I believe, four of those pieces. It's to reform the intersection of Central and Elliott. Originally, we got a P Wed grant eight years ago. We got another, we got more state money, another million dollars to come in and do more improvements in that intersection seven years ago, and now we got this grant to match up and try to bring all of the pieces together. What we're doing is taking the P Wed grant that was done in Milton Village, the Central Ave revitalization project that, on Central Ave Business District, and trying to connect the two. So, we have period lighting going up Elliott Street, over the hill from Central Ave down to Elliott Street, so all the lights will match, and all the LEDs, because we wind up paying for those lights. There will be money in the project for, to supplement our High Street budget.
Bill, did you mean down to Adams Street?
Adams to...
Okay.
Central.
You said central to Elliott, but over to Adams?
It's on Elliott, from Adams to Central.
To Central, yeah, okay.
By Steel and Ride, across the street, going over the hill, in front of the new Milton Hill Apartments. They'll wind up paying for the lights in front of their building. A lot of this is, the money was leveraged from the state by other monies that could be had privately, such as the Milton Hill Project, our project on reconstruction of High Street, and the amount of work that has gone into redeveloping the Central Ave Business District. We do not have plans at this time for the work, it's another bump out in between the two crosswalks that are there now, on the right-hand side. There will be no loss of parking spaces, it's just to reform the sidewalk, to make the sidewalk a little bit bigger. The lights going over the hill, High Street, and it's just some vegetation in that area too. There was a piece in there about a pocket park, but we're not doing the pocket park because DCR is going to do it as part of their bikeway project.
So, the $1 million is going to cover all the wiring, obviously, along the sidewalk of Elliott Street?
Reconstruction of the sidewalk, and...
Reconstruction. The wiring will go underneath, obviously?
Yes.
Light every?
Yes. It'll be lights, lights, wiring.
What kind of sidewalk, will it be a brick sidewalk, or concrete?
No, I believe it's a cement sidewalk.
Cement sidewalk.
We're playing with the idea of the brick band, but I'm not sure the brick band is in there at this time.
That would be nice.
It would, but the budget went in for a lot more, and what we got was a million dollars, so we had to find ways to, certain things had to come out of the budget. Joe Lynch and John Thompson will be handling the particulars of day-to-day management of the project.
Sounds exciting.
It does.
Where would the pocket park be?
It would have been on the other side of the tracks.
But...
Went down towards the river.
You said DCR is planning to do it.
Between the river and the tracks.
Okay.
And it would have been just a pocket park that would have abutted the Central Ave Trolley Station.
But DCR is planning to do that?
DCR is going to build it.
Same location, just...
Same location, they're going to build it.
Included in this work is the installation of the clock, one of the clocks, one of the two clocks that was submitted by the 150th Committee, so, it's exciting as well.
One of them up, yeah?
Yes.
We have one for there and one for East Milton.
Which won't get done till after the improvements are done.
Right. I was talking to Howard Stein Hudson today to get their surveyors out there, get more traffic counts, get them done sooner or not later. It's interesting that Chief Wells brought up the piece about the parking meters, because the number one recommendation in the East Milton Parking Study was parking meters. And I know when you were a freshman selectman, I did a piece for the selectmen on parking meters. So, be an interesting, bring it back out and do it again.
I think the time is, I, you know, I think the time is correct for them, you know, for several reasons, but, traffic enforcement and for, for just, you know, just turnover parking spaces.
I think it's the enforcement part plays into this.
Bill, what kind of timing are we looking at for the Elliott Street work, for this grant? When will, when will people expect to see this project completed?
Um...
Ballpark time.
We were supposed to have had the project finished by June of '14, but due to some contractual mess-ups, we're off by probably a year and a half. Will be given another year, so it's probably June of '15.
But the money is guaranteed?
We have a contract now, or we're in the process of going through the, signing the contract, so yes, the money will be as soon as the contract is in our hand.
But we're going to authorize?
Yes, Joe Lynch.
Joe Lynch to sign all the contracts. Okay, good. We have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the Mass Works contract for streetscape and lighting improvements along Elliott Street, and to authorize the DPW director to sign all contractual material on behalf of the board of selectmen.
Second.
Motion was made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thanks, Bill. Number 11 is the approval of 2014 Avon Walk for Breast Cancer.
I'll move to approve the use of Town Street some ways for the 2014 Avon Walk for Breast Cancer on both Saturday, May 17th, and Sunday, May 18th, 2014, and to give permission to mark the route on Friday, May 16th, 2014, using temporary plastic signs on trees and permanent signposts. All temporary signage will be removed on Sunday, May 18th, and approval is given contingent upon approval by the police chief.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. I believe that's 39 miles, is it, over two days?
Something like that, yeah.
You going to do it, Tom?
No, last year though, I, because I was running down to Pope Paul Park and around Tanian Beach, and I kind of ran into the middle of them for a while, but that's the closest I came to it.
Number 12 is a discussion on the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association Property and Casualty Group election. You want to tell us about this, Anne Marie?
Yes, as you know, this board is scheduled to go to the MMA Conference, January 24th and 25th, and at the Heinz Convention Center. On Saturday, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, our insurance company, Meyer, hosts its annual luncheon and business meeting, and at that business meeting, they nominate candidates to certain committees, the property casualty, the workers comp area, and so on.
Yep.
The, it's customarily, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, who is the delegate to vote at this business meeting on Saturday, so, Mr. Chairman, I just need to know if you're going to be attending that meeting, and if not, we have to vote one of the other two members to be...
Well, I will be there all day Friday, and until noon time on Saturday, and then I'm heading to Florida at 2 o'clock, so I won't be there to vote, so...
Poor you.
I'd like to ask one of my fellow selectmen if one of them would like to step up and...
Either one.
Yeah, I'll be there, will you be there?
I'll be there, yeah, you can do it, Tom.
Okay. Katie?
Would you like to make a motion to do that?
Yes.
Do we have a motion here?
No, because I thought Dennis was...
Okay. I'll move to appoint Katie Conlon as the...
The voting delegate for the Meyer.